Okay, sounds good. All right, um, welcome everyone to the August twenty fourth, I believe it or not, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, Operation Budget, and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. My name is Dr. Kenneth Harris. I'm the Chair of the Committee. Welcome back to a brand new school year. Really happy that you all are here. And attended our committee meeting tonight. I'd like to go around the room quickly, introduce my board colleagues who are here with us today, also serving on the committee. Dr. Juanita Miller, Dr. Juanita Miller's here. Madame LaSalle Fraser, and I don't think David Murray's here, but he is also serving on the committee this year. So you'll see representation from each of us throughout the year, but thank you so much for being here this evening. Who is taking role? Ms. Barton, can you please take role for me?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Kenneth Harris, the second.
Here.
Madeline Salier Fraser.
Present.
Dr. Juanita Miller.
Yeah, excuse me. Kenneth, did you just get a doctorate or something? And didn't tell anybody?
I just graduated. We just got back, Dr. Miller.
Congratulations, you sneaky person.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, we'll talk more about it offline, but I appreciate you all. It's been a long, long road there. Thank you for calling the role, Ms. Barton. So let's jump right into it. Item one point through three, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes from, we say August twenty fourth here, but it should be, oh no, this today, adopt the, adopt the meeting agenda for today.
The agenda. So movements, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. May I have a second? Well, I can second. That's right. I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, here you know. The agenda is approved. Let's move into one point four, the approval of the June fifteenth twenty twenty two meeting minutes from our final meeting of last school year. May I have a motion to approve the June fifteenth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes?
So movement, Mr. Chair.
Second that. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so moving right along here to section two point O, we do not have public comments at this moment. But just a reminder, public, public comment is always open. There's a link available on the PG CPS website where you can log in and sign up for public comment. If you don't want to speak, you also can submit written public comments as well. Moving right along to section three point O. We'll do discussions and actions, and before we move on to three point one point one, I'd like to yield the floor to our CFO to give an update on the summer school review report.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations on the doctorate.
Thanks.
Yes, we requested to move the discussion of summer program expenditures until the next committee meeting because the data is not yet available. So the summer programs ended August fifth and payroll for that period was distributed this past Friday. We have costing processes in place for the summer payrolls to put the expenditures in the correct accounts. We can't run those right now along with our, what we're doing right now for our fiscal year end close. So the expenditure data is not available for reporting right now, so we did request that move this to our next meeting where we'll be able to go through the data in more detail and really have a more robust conversation during that next meeting.
Definitely. And thank you, Mr. Hartman, for updating the public on our plan to review the summer school report at the next Obafa meeting. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to three point one, we'll do a CIP moment. So presentation and discussion of the recommendations to the board regarding CIP and CMP. I'll yield the floor to, am I giving it to you, Mr. Matlock, or you, Dr. Fawcett?
Well, I was gonna, I'm sorry. I was gonna do the presentation, but I was gonna ask that you could skip us for just a second. I'm in, I'm in transit and I'll be at my permanent location in a couple of minutes, and the presentation's about twenty minutes, so I, I just wanted to be local. Stable while I did that.
Yeah, that, that's no problem typically, Mr. Matlock, but we have a really short agenda tonight. You're actually one of the last things on the agenda. Before we close out. So. So, so let me, let me ask Dr. Fawcett how you'd like to proceed.
Oh, well, I mean, we could always put the the presentation of, I'm not quite sure Mr. Malak is able to see that, but he is presenting the CIP. I was unaware he was gonna be in transit.
Yeah, I understand things happen.
I didn't plan to be.
It's all right.
I didn't plan to be in transit, I'm sorry.
Okay, this is a public meeting, O'Shaun, about how long do we have before you're stable?
Mr. Matlock, go on and do what you have to do. We can wait. This is important, and the public is listening. So, Mr. Hertzmann, did you have anything to report?
No, Dr. Miller, unless there's any questions that you have.
Would that?
So, so, so tell you what, since I'm not sure how long Mr. Matlock's gonna be in transit.
Only a couple of minutes, only a couple of minutes, two minutes. I'll be stable in two minutes.
Okay.
Doctor Harris waited for you, so wait for him.
Yeah, I have no problem waiting for him. Let me, let me ask.
I apologize. I really apologize. I did not expect to hit traffic like I did.
Listen, your fine, your fine stuff happens. I understand. We don't need to go back and forth about it. Don't want to put you on the spot, Dr. Fawcett. Is there anything that you can talk about off the top of your head in terms of some updates that we're doing to the schools via, via the summer, just general, just general updates on that?
Since it's off the top of my head, you know, I have at least two other heads here with Dr. Coleman, but I do want to really, you know, talk about, we will be opening a brand new school on Monday, and that school is Cherokee Lane Elementary School. And it is actually a prototype, you know, we, this is the first school that we've built for Prince County that were primarily was built off site. So it is a modular build. The first time that we've done it, we did it through a state grant. And if you have not been to the building, it is a lovely, lovely building. And we had the opportunity to officially, we've been there, but do you know, to officially tour it yesterday, actually, and we were able to thank our staff, whether it was our CIP staff, our purchasing staff, members of our building services team, everyone who was involved in the project, because, because it was being built off site in Pennsylvania. I had to take numerous trips to the plant where it was being built, and you know, all of our different teams from HVAC to, to you know, many different departments, you know, had to take trips, you know, to actually, you know, inspect and to approve, and it was just a great experience. And if you haven't had the opportunity to get out, I believe the official grand opening will be, or ribbon cutting will occur on September nineteenth. But I do know it's one of the schools, of course, that Dr. Golson is visiting on the first day of school. And if anyone has the opportunity to get there, I would just go, you know, take a look. And it's just a beautiful building. So that's one thing off the top of my head.
And Dr. Fawcett, if I can, if I can pick your brain on that a little bit, I know you said the building was designed off site. Is this kind of part of the new series of modular type buildings that we're going about producing in PG CPS?
Yeah, so, so it wasn't necessarily designed off site, and you know, you had that designed, but it was constructed sixty percent of the building, about sixty, sixty-five percent of the building was actually put off site and then trucked it, pieced together like a big erectus is, is the best way I could do it. Now, we haven't, this is, you know, we haven't, on our plan currently, don't have any buildings that we're gonna do similar, but that are constructed right now, like a P three is totally different, William words to Sutland, they're not modular construction. But Sean can probably speak this, we do plan on doing more model constructions based on how well this one went.
Yeah, we are. Yeah, I mean, right now, one of the places where we think it might work is at the, at the Hyvesville Elementary School. And it's something that we're looking at also for the expansion of Delphi Elementary School at the Cool Springs site there. So we're thinking of using this again. It was very effective from a time and material standpoint. We actually were able to build very quickly, and we were able to build simultaneously while we were doing site work. So that's another advantage of the, of the process. So it's, it's a really good tool. We can't use it everywhere, but in places where the sites are tight, it's a good, it's a good tool.
Yeah, you see, you see that style kind of popping up in construction around, specifically around sustainability and things like that, like you said, with tighter spaces. So definitely, it kind of, it kind of perked up when Dr. Process said that.
Yeah, my, my peers in the, in the school construction community are excited to come visit the facility for just that reason. They're gonna come down and take a look at it because some of the mothers are considering them, especially in some of the more urban sites.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
So I'm stable now. I was wondering, Ms. Barton, could put the presentation up and I could then walk y'all through it?
Sounds good. Thanks. And thanks, Dr. Fawcett, for, you know, answering my questions off the top.
No, no problem. That was an easy one.
He has a good one. While we're waiting, what, where is Clinton Grove on the construction list?
So, Dr. Miller, I can't get you that information because I don't have the IFMP in front of me. I can't tell you exactly what cycle it's in and when it's coming, but I can definitely get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, man.
Okay, so this is going to be our, right now, we've been working through the budget for FY twenty four, but in our presentation, we'd like to give everybody some background on what we've been working through during the course of the year. So as you'll see, there is a, if I can get a page two.
Hold on one second, Dr. Matlock. I think, Mr. Matlock, it looks like we're having technical difficulties with the slide. So give it one second to load.
While we're waiting for the load up, I can tell you about, I can sort of give you some background on what's been happening. So this summer.
One second, Mr. Matlock. One second. Ms. Barton, if you're having technical difficulties, either you can give me screen sharing privileges and I can do it, or I see Dr. Fawcett waving his hand, he can also do it. Just if we're having technical difficulties with that, so. Okay, it looks like they've reached over, okay.
Yeah, Cindy's picked it up, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, so you can see your screen.
Great. So, so what, usually these presentations, we'd like to tell you what we've done and what, what we did last year, what was funded last year, and then what our requests are gonna be for this year. So if we move to the next slide. So we had, and for last year, we had a lot of work go forward, and the, if you move their next slide. So as you can see, we had forty-two projects that were that were finished and occupied last year. We had eighty-eight projects that were a hundred percent closed out off our books, which is a really good thing. We had a hundred and twenty-nine projects with the capital funds that are in construction this summer. Now, not all of them are just summertime projects. Some of them are, because we had such a short summer, a lot of them are gonna be phased, so we were completing part of the work over the summer, and some of the work is moving into the winter time, and we'll do it off hours, because we only had six weeks this summer. And we had six projects received design or a water pool from the state. Our next slide. So we had over a hundred and thirty-two awards made for design or construction services this year. And that includes projects that we do directly and projects that we're doing, working with building services to do. We, we spent over a hundred and forty-eight million dollars, actually it's gonna be probably over a hundred and fifty again this year, once we finish closeouts. And there are over sixty change orders were processed this year. Twelve percent of those sales are due to agency mandates, that is, changes that were required by DEPI or WSFC due to new building codes and changes that we had. A lot of these projects were planned before two thousand eighteen building code came into place, and so when they got started and we had to make other changes to comply with the code. We had twenty-seven percent of, almost twenty-eight percent of our sales were due to unpristine or poor conditions at the existing site. You know, we'd run into a pipe or something that was already broken, or, or we'd run into asbestos where we didn't expect it, so we had some change orders in that regard. Less than one percent of our change order, order rate this year was, which is, so it was under the industry average of four percent, so it was less than one percent. Industry average is four percent. So overall, when you consider all our projects, we did not have that many change orders compared to other people in the industry. And even though that was the case, twenty-six percent of our, our process change orders were deduct change orders, and we received roughly about eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in credit backs. Next slide, please. So these are some of the types of projects that we did. I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but you can see we had a lot of different ones, like systemic replacements, gymnasium upgrades, things like that. These are the types of projects that we were doing, in some cases, a lot of our, our county funded projects. Next slide, please. So our summer projects, again, a lot of systemic HVAC replacement work, eighteen code correction projects. You can see the type of projects that we're doing, kitchen improvements, classroom renovations. Next slide, please. So our major projects under construction right now, we have Sutland High School, which you were, I think everybody was at the the groundbreaking for, we're in demolition of the, of the gym right now. And we have Cherokee Lane, which just, just is finished and will open in a week. William Work Middle School, which a lot of the foundation work there is, is, is going well. They're even putting up some of the wall, so it's really moving well. New Glenridge Area Middle School, which is also, it started late, but we're clearing all the ground, and it's not, we're picking up speed on that project. Andrew Jackson Middle School, which is basically an upgrade, modernization, renovation, same for student to cater. And then we have Robert Goddard Montessori, we finished the HCHC upgrade, but we had to do a lot of extra work there, so we got a lot more work done in the building than just the HVAC upgrade. And then Chilum Elementary School, pod conversion. We had that going, that's, that's, that's finishing up in the, after, in the fall. Our next slide, please. So we also had the ACF projects, which are New Delphi Area Middle School, which is going very well. Walkerville Middle School also going well. Mostly all with the, the Southern project, I believe, are ahead of schedule. And that will be the new one in Summit Area, which is now going to be Colin Powell Academy. Next slide. So we have these other projects that are in design. New Northern Area High School is in design. Actually, we may end up doing a collaboration at University of Maryland on that, so we're working on that. High Point High School, modernization, that's in design. William Schmidt Outdoor Educational Center is also coming to end of design, is getting ready to go on to permits, where it's in permits. Cool Spring, which is in, is in design. James Madison HVAC. So we're, we're, we're close to getting ready to start that. And Lamont Elementary School HVAC upgrades also in, in design development. Next slide, please. So what do we do about the numbers? So you can see the percentage of our overall expenditures here. You can see our big number that we spend is on systemic upgrades and on code corrections, as far as a lot of the budgets concerned, and building repairs. You can see where a lot of our money goes as far as some of the summertime projects are concerned. Our next slide, please. So what was funded for FY twenty-three? So this is kind of, this is last year's CIP, what got approved. This budget was finalized in June for, and was made available to us in July of this summer. So if you, go to the next slide, please. So this is the process as, as it exists. We have the education facilities master plan that comes out in May. We draft our budgets in August, and we submit to the board for approval by September. It's usually completed, and then it goes to the county council and to the IAC for their approval. And then sometime between June and, between October and June, the budget is then reviewed and approved, and then we start implementing in July. Next slide, please. So as you can look back, FY twenty-three, we requested fifty-one million dollars from the state, and we got a hundred and eleven, a hundred and thirteen million dollars from the state. We requested two hundred and fifteen million in county funding, and we got a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars in county funding. For total, whole approval, approved funding of two hundred and fifty-one million, six hundred and eight dollars. Next slide, please.
Mr. Matlock, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Can you go back to that slide?
Yes.
I'm looking at in the twenty twenty-three where the state approved almost twice as much as we requested, and yet the county gave us half as much as what we requested. Was there some collaboration between the county and council and the state to do that?
Not, not really, no. It was, it was a question of circumstances. So there was more, there was some grant funding that was available, because there's an asterisk there that shows that. There's about thirty million dollars in grant funding that was available from the state that we added on. And then we had a project that was coming to an end of its appropriations life, but it wasn't ready to go. That was William Work. And so we, we rolled that project back in to this year's CIP, so we wouldn't lose the funding. And so you're, you're seeing about two, two items that weren't originally requested that we got to do projects. The grant, the thirty million dollar grant was to do, to finish our CTE project at Crossland, Crossland High School, and to do an early education center over Riverdale Hills. So there were, there was some extra money they gave us based on legislation, and also some roll, some funding that got rolled in from previous years. So that's why it looks that way.
Thank you.
One more, one more question for me, Mr. Matlock. So I see historically from county funding, it's, it seems pretty commonplace to receive significantly less than what you asked for. So I assume those factors were considered, were considered when making your budget.
Yeah, I mean, we asked, and one of the things we're trying to get away from is asking for a significantly more than was previously approved in the earlier budget. But we haven't totally gotten away from it. We're asking for what we need in a lot of cases, and then we have to make adjustments based upon what is available for bonding. I'm trying to get our request closer to the bonding limit, so that we don't have to have this major, you don't see those kind of major cuts. I would really like to be, get to a point where I'm asking for a hundred and fifty, and they're giving me a hundred and fifty. And so we're working in that direction. We're working very closely with OMB. I've gone over this budget with them already, so that they're prepped for it, and I explained why we asked what we wanted, and we haven't asked for as much as we have in the past, but we're hoping to get closer to what they can actually bond.
Yeah, because even, even that, I requested them out, there's still a deficit. If I'm just doing the numbers real quick, fourteen, fifteen million, something like that. I think, and that's just fifty, it's like fifteen million. But that's, that's fine. That's, that's what I'm observing. That's not even a question. Thanks.
Alrighty, next slide. So we have the projects that were approved, William Work Middle School, we got the last of the money on that, New Glenridge Area Middle School, got the last of the money on that. Sutland Modernization, we started getting funding on that. William Schmidt, as I said before, we rolled some funding from previous years into FY twenty-three for that project. That was already previously approved. We have systemic projects that are state funded. State and county funded, H Winship Wheatley, Charles Flowers, Philcy Williams, and the CTE Southern Hub standalone building, and now Riverdale Hills EEC. Next slide, please. So we spent, we got over forty-three million dollars approved funds for, that are just county funds for county funded projects, like code compliance updates, HVAC upgrades, kitchen food, major repairs, playgrounds, parking lots, stage renovations, security upgrades, and stadium upgrades. These are traditional funding categories that we, we have, we always ask for some money in every year for these types of projects. Next slide, please. So what was requested for FY twenty-four? So this is kind of what we're gonna, what we're asking for from the state and county this year. And we've made some adjustments because we know that there's grant funds available, and we're trying to make, take advantage of those things. We're also making adjustments because Sutland, as you know, it got hit by this inflationary trend that we're, that we saw over the last year and a half, and so the budget, the planned budget for that project was inefficient, and so we knew we were gonna have to ask for a little bit more. So we made a lot of adjustments to make that happen. So if you go to the next slide, please. So we've asked for a hundred and fifty-one million dollars in county funding. We've asked for sixty-one million dollars in state funding, and we're asking for twenty-nine million dollars in state HFFF grants. And that, that, that's kind of the additional category that we're sort of adding to our budget request. So a hundred and thirty-six million dollars are for the three new schools or modernizations that we have going on. That primarily, that would be Sutland, and one project that we, we haven't mentioned before, which is Cool Springs, the expansion of Adelphi Elementary School at the Cool Springs campus, and also for the William Schmidt project. We also asked for forty-six million dollars in Countywide funding and twenty-nine million dollars, twenty-five million dollars for the ACFP three funding. Our next slide, please. So we have thirty-nine million in roof replacements and boiler trailer replacements at existing school facilities via the HFFF grant funding. So twenty-nine million of that is state funding, ten million of that is our, our county contribution to those projects. Eleven million for stage renovations for modernizing Cycle One approved prop schools. There are six stage renovation projects that are gonna be moving forward, two of which will start in FY twenty-four. And so this is funding for those. We have four million in major repairs for existing schools, four million in mechanical HVAC upgrades for existing schools, four million dollars in compliance mandates, three point five million dollars in stadium upgrades, and three million for central garage. Next slide, please. So as you see them laid out here, this shows how the money divided up between the state and county funding. So you can see for, this year for Sutland, we're asking for forty-eight million dollars from the state and roughly sixty-six million dollars from the county. And then for for Cool Springs, we're looking for nine million dollars in the state and eight, eight million dollars from the county. And then for for William Schmidt, we're asking for an additional four million dollars from the county. And then we have the other project, projects that we have gone there, which are High Point High School and International, and most of that's the funding that's been provided already for design. and, uh, International and most of that's, uh, the funding that's been provided already for design. Uh, next slide please. So, um, if you look here, we have, um, for Woodridge Elementary School, H V A T replacements. That is a state and county funded. That's a new project that was not on there before, but that's the one we're adding. Um, and the other ones are, um, healthy schools. You can see those are the healthy schools grants that we've requested. Um, and you can see where the funding falls from the state and the, the county on those projects. And they equal roughly thirty-nine million dollars. Uh, next slide please. So we have alternate school construction. We have our first, um, the, uh, first tranche, uh, phase one, which this is money for the availability payment. And that's about fifteen million dollars. And then, um, and that's going into the, the escrow for that. And then the nine point five is for, uh, phase two, our, um, um, the, um, costs for, uh, all, running the office and also for the procurement prac, uh, services that we need in order to procure phase two. Uh, next slide please. Um, so we have our shortfall funding, uh, which we've asked for four point five million dollars to cover some shortfalls on some existing projects that are out there. Um, we're also asking for, uh, stage renovation money. Uh, as you can see, there are two schools that are moving forward. Our, uh, Long Fields and Calverton. Uh, and, uh, this is the total budget, uh, for the, for the, for the stages. But the, what we're asking for this year is ten million for, uh, uh, for, um, uh, Long Fields and seven hundred thousand dollars for, uh, Calverton. Next slide please. And then, uh, as you can see, we have some of the traditional project categories. Um, asbestos, ADA upgrades, air chill tanks, code corrections and lead remediation. Any appropriate, um, traditional budgets or requests that we have in them, uh, for that, uh, for this year. As you can see, we'll spend more than that over the next, uh, five years, but that's what we're posing for this particular year. Next slide please. Um, and again, we have, again, more of our traditional, uh, funding, uh, categories. H V A T and plumbing upgrades, central garage, kitchen and food services, uh, land and building infrastructure, uh, major repairs, life cycles, uh, parking lots and driveways, planning and design, playground, um, playing field replacements, roof replacements, security upgrades, stadium upgrades and standalone classrooms. You'll notice that in a couple of the categories, um, like for infrastructure, we have not asked for any money. Uh, the money that we normally would have asked for that, we slid into our, some of the budget, uh, up, up, up top. Um, some of these have been cut a little bit, uh, not dramatically, but enough that we could, uh, supplement some of the spending up top. Um, and we have some carryforwards to cover, um, some, some unspent carryforward we have to cover the costs for this upcoming F Y twenty-four. Uh, next slide please. So, uh, that's kind of the, the, the budget in it, uh, as we have it. Again, ninety million in state funding, get between traditional, uh, C I P funding and H S F F funding. Uh, and then a number of a hundred and fifty-one million, uh, in county funding, uh, totaling a request of two hundred and forty-one million dollars. Um, next slide. So, um, this is, uh, uh, general with schedule that we have for these projects. Um, I mean, for this process, so it, we've already had first reader. Um, we're having public hearing on the sixth and then second reader on the twenty-second of September. October fourth, we have to have it ready for submission to the I A C, uh, and the county. Um, and then, uh, uh, then there's gonna be submission of the I A C of the comprehensive maintenance plan, which is not totally related to this, but it's kind of related because a lot of some of the maintenance that we, that's done in the building, so it's repair replacements, sometimes are funded by us. Um, and then, uh, we get an announcement of the F Y twenty-three capital budget. Um, and, uh, twenty-four budget, I should say. The I A C approves seventy-five percent of this budget on the county government and public hearings for the budget. Then the I A C approves ninety percent of the budget in, uh, February. And then the county government, uh, public hearing for, um, is in March. And then the state legislature adopts the final budget, uh, in April. And then the I A C approves the budget, uh, projects in F Y twenty, in, in, in the F Y twenty-three, uh, budget request. And then, uh, we have the county approved the final budget. And then the I A C releases the adopted, uh, the adopted funds in June. We have, um, next slide. All right, so, uh, questions?
Uh, so thank you, Mr. Matlock, for that presentation. Um, before I open the floor up to my colleagues for additional questions, just want to remind the public that, uh, these slides are available online if you want to review them or take a look at them later. Um, specifically pertaining to slide twenty-eight, which really outlines next steps for us. Um, there's a public hearing, so if you have an opinion or want your voice to be heard in, in regards to C I P, uh, September sixth is the date that I, I noted down here and you'll see that on slide twenty-eight. And then we're moving for a second reader for the full board on September twenty-second. So please utilize these dates again, if you have any comments, concerns, anything like that. That's why we have these, these sessions available now. Um, open the floor up to my colleagues for additional questions.
I, I, let me raise my hand.
No, you're fine, good.
I can. Um, Ms. Matlock, you talked about the Northern High School project and working with College Park. What, what is that? Would you kind of give me some details on that, please?
Yeah, so, uh, right now, what we're trying to do, we're working with them on an access drive, uh, that will cut across University of Maryland property onto our property. It will allow us to hook up a Metzger Road to Buck Lodge, um, uh, campus. And it'll, it'll also make part, uh, and also the drive that will connect, uh, Metzger Road to the new high school. When we were working through that, we're now talking to them about maybe some other amenities that we might be able to collaborate on, on that campus that might serve both campuses. Um, and, uh, so we're, I don't have a lot of details. We're early in discussions. But, uh, we think we might be able to, uh, actually enhance the project, um, at the school site to provide some amenities that can also be utilized by the college as well. And, and thus provide an upgraded set of facilities.
Well, uh, that's what my next question was going to be. What kind of collaboration, uh, is, uh, are we, or has the university approached us with any kind of collaboration in the use of, uh, the facilities?
Well, we're right now just surveying the land and see if we can use it. But I don't have any, any details yet, uh, on exactly how we might do it. But I know that there, we're, we're early in conversations. Right now, the primary collaboration is on the access drive.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Board Member Madlock.
Hi, thank you. Um, as one of the newest board members, I have two questions about the whole process in terms of how our schools, um, chosen and, and in the cycle. Can you help me find out, uh, what is the process? And this is a question open to anyone that is able to answer it. Um, I also, um, my visits to some of the schools, I've noticed that there is, um, huge disparities between school campuses. Some elementary schools in district, they, um, seem modernized and in great shape. And others really need help. So I'm wondering how do we, um, level the playing field?
So, uh, let me give you a feel for how the cycles were created and then you'll kind of get a feel for how we're proceeding. So, um, back in two thousand and fifteen, I believe it was, um, uh, they did a, a facilities assessment. And where they, they had, they hired a third-party organization to go out and evaluate every building in the school district. And then, uh, there was a second study done in two thousand and seventeen. It was primarily based around, uh, educational efficacy. And there was another set of evaluations of each facility. And those two studies are combined. They take up like a, like a several shelves in my office and my, um, in, in my, uh, on my, on my, uh, bookcase. Uh, and, and they were very extensive. And what they enabled the school district to do was to rank the schools by their, by their, by their, by their, uh, condition. And then again, rank them based on overcrowding and educational, uh, sufficiency. That is the ability of the school to pro- provide, uh, a moderate education, um, the way it's, was, as intended. Uh, and based upon, um, those, those, those factors were used to develop, uh, basically, uh, four cycles. Cycle one, cycle two, three and four. Cycle one ha- is addressing two things. Uh, first, it's addressing, um, um, uh, conditions of the building, buildings in poor condition. But also buildings in corporate condition that also had massive overcrowding and, and issues like that. So a- as you look at a lot of the way in which, um, a lot of the buildings that we are addressing first, we're addressing a lot of schools that touch more kids. So schools are overcrowded, um, we're trying to get to those, we're trying to get to those first. Um, and we're trying to create more seats so that one, we weren't holding kids. Um, our students who are in sixth grade, we weren't asking them, the schools to retain them, their population in those elementary schools and allowing them to move on to middle schools, which is why, as you might see, the A C F has, uh, all middle schools or K through eight. Um, that was designed to create more, um, middle school seats. Um, the other thing that we're trying to do, um, is we're trying to address those schools in that cycle in order. It gives us the ability to one, um, take a long view and figure out what we're gonna be funding next and what needs to be designed. It gives us the ability to plan. Uh, you can't really do this ad hoc. So there are a lot of schools in cycle two and cycle one, and including cycle three, that are all pretty much in really bad condition. Um, and so a lot of it is based upon overcrowding and educational efficacy, which also go into what needs to happen first. So the school, um, we have some schools that are actually, uh, in pretty decent shape, uh, from a structural standpoint. But, um, but they are so old, they don't really deliver, uh, the educational quality that we would like to see for school. So, and then there's some buildings that are, uh, in condition where we can't even repair them because the systems they have are so old that nobody makes parts for them anymore. So, um, what we've done is the cycle one, two, three and four have laid out those schools sort of along those lines. Um, and, uh, and have now allowed us to plan and budget for those projects in some sort of orderly fashion. Um, I'm gonna tell you, uh, and be very honest, um, fifty percent of our schools are beyond their useful life. They, they, uh, and that is not a sell-by date. Uh, we're starting to see structural issues in built, in our buildings. We were averaging about three structural repairs a year in these buildings. So what we're doing right now, we're in the process of doing a structural analysis of ninety-five of our buildings that fit within a certain age range and a certain construction category. And we're doing destructive and structural analysis to determine if those buildings, um, how much life they have left in them. Uh, what, if we need to reorder, um, the buildings in which we're gonna do them in. Um, I'm primarily doing a modernization budget. We do do some repair and, and, and update, uh, as part of that budget. But right now, we're focusing on trying to get as many buildings as we can built, consolidate where possible, because that reduces the number, the maintenance burden on the school district. And it reduces the number of roofs we have to worry about. Um, it also is gonna lead closer to the, um, allow us to do some things related to our, uh, sustainability plans that, that we're working on now. Um, so it's all working together. Uh, we also work, we're trying to figure out where populations are going. Uh, that drives a little bit of this as well. Um, but we're, we're trying to make all that work.
Thank you. Um, is there, is there a way that I can have access? Um, are they, uh, the reports divided by districts or is it just a general P G C P S, um, hierarchy of needs type report?
Yeah, it's, it's just a general, uh, just a general, uh, 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 thing. It's, it's probably about, um, several volumes. I mean, it's, it's not a short report. Uh, what I could do is if you were, uh, you could, I can arrange for you to come in. Uh, we can allow you to look it over and then determine what you want and we can make copies for you or whatever you need.
Yeah, Sean, let me jump in there. Um, uh, Board Member LaSalle, uh, the Education Facilities Master Plan and the amendment that was approved, uh, board approved in twenty seventeen is also available online. It's online. It's a public document on our website. If you go to the, uh, capital programs part of our website, it's all located there also, if you wanted to look at it electronically. And that's also the document I was referring to, uh, with Board Member Miller earlier. We can actually see where each, uh, uh, school has been ranked and placed in terms of the order based on those, um, uh, those characteristics that, that, uh, Dr. Matlock talked about, uh, earlier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was that your last question, Board Member?
Yes, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Miller, sorry, your hand up.
Let me just say one more thing, uh, uh,
Yeah.
There as a Board Member LaSalle. Uh, uh, anytime, as, 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 as Mr. Matlock said, if you want to set up a time and come over, we can kind of walk you through all of those documents to kind of, you know, just kind of, um, um, you know, explain to you internally, you know, how they kind of operate the whole C I P process. We've been more than willing. We, we typically have done that, uh, when Board Members, uh, uh, first come on and just kind of give them a overview of the whole process.
I would appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna take your offer on that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Dr. Miller, sorry, your hand up. Can you put it down? Questioner?
Because Mr. Fa- Dr. Faustette, what made the statement in terms of it being online? And then the suggestion that, um, it would be good for the, uh, new board members, because we have, also have two additional ones coming, you know, after the election. But for the, in, during the interim, uh, it would be good to bring, um, uh, Board Member, um, Zapor Miller and, uh, LaSaye Frazier in, uh, to look at it. But, and I also would like, uh, I'd like to sit in on the ones with, with, uh, those, um, that LaSaye Frazier goes over, because we're both in South County and there are several, several schools that could be merged, as you indicated, Mr. Matlock. And, uh, and they are really old. So I, that's where I want to see, that's my interest in terms of, uh, how we can merge, because some of them have very low, um, enrollments and, um, well, you know the drill. So that, that's my interest in terms of, uh, merging and building, you know, uh, to co- accommodate those small, uh, small, um, enroll, enrollments. Thank you. This was a very good presentation as usual. Um, thank you very much.
Yeah. Sounds like we have no other comments from Board Members. Anything else from you, Mr. Matlock or, uh, Dr. Faustette or Dr. Coleman? Uh, Ms. Cindy, you can stop sharing your screen now. All right, so thank you for that. Uh, since this was, uh, a report involving C I P and C N P, we're not taking any actions on it. Just an update to let us in the public know what's happening. And then we'll follow that outline again on slide twenty-eight regarding public hearing. Second, brief to the full board. Uh, moving right along to section four, uh, discussing follow-ups and next steps. There's no follow-ups from our June fifteenth meeting. Um, and then moving on to our next meeting. The next O B A F A meeting will be September fourteenth at five P M. Uh, so I ask that you join us there. Again, you can sign up for public comment that will be available online for you to sign up for and reference the general public. And now moving on to section five, unless I see anyone else with anything, no, woke up. Moving to section five, uh, everyone, thank you for attending our meeting tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn us?
Uh, I'm so moved, this chair, but I'd like for, um, Mario to keep you, you and, um, Board Member LaSaye on for a few minutes afterwards.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I was thinking of, yeah, we can do that. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a great day, everyone, or great evening. Okay, so I think, um, I think,
Make me the host, Mario. Will do. I was just about to ask.
Yeah.
Cindy, I heard you did a good job last night. Congratulations.
My co-host, of the much, Miss Mia.
You're on a good job.
Thank you.
So we're both leaving right now. You're the host, Dr. Miller. Thank you.
You gotta end the, you gotta end the recording too.
Oh, that's right.
Mia, you gotta end the recording.
Okay, we'll do, hold on.
Um, you got it?